Planning Commission meeting to order. Welcome to the March 26 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may cause, maybe cause for the Chair to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. Thank you. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Acosta Galvez, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world which stands on our mission and our power.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, certainly. Commissioner Adams is absent. Commissioner Pellman?
Here.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Here.
Chair Twining?
Here.
Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
And Commissioner Acosta Galván. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Now's the time for public comments for the items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comments?
We do have one public speaker. Perry Clitheroe, please come down to the microphones.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am here tonight to speak about our recent legal struggles, especially with what happened on Friday and our upcoming trial on Friday in regards to our non-compliant housing element. To quickly dispense with the idea that we are going to win, that we are likely to win these lawsuits, going back to the 1890s, California has ruled that cities, or charter cities, have the right to govern municipal affairs, except the state legislature has the right to continue to govern on matters of statewide concern. The great California housing shortage is certainly a matter of state concern, and we are not going to win that lawsuit. It's just not going to happen. It is a matter of state concern, though I appreciate the energy. Builders' remedy is going to be used against us, especially with how vocally opposed we've been to them. I feel like there might be some spite involved there, unfortunately, which isn't right, but could happen. Builders' remedy is, of course, the free-market solution to the great California housing shortage, and it will mean we have no control over where upzoning takes place in our city, where big new apartment buildings get placed, where big new condo developments get placed. I don't want to focus on the fear, though, tonight. What I think is disappointing is that I think we're missing a lot of opportunities to improve this city and quality of life for the residents, specifically on transportation. My whole life congestion and traffic has been a big issue here in Huntington Beach. Obviously, we're very built out and very sprawly. Everybody drives. I don't know the statistics, but I'd wager the majority of Huntington Beach residents commute outside of the city limits to go to work and to make a living, and that's without talking about the tourist traffic or school traffic that occurs every day. If we passed a compliant housing element, we could focus our upzoning on certain thoroughfares that are used heavily every day, such as Adams, where thousands of students travel to OCC. Right now, they have to choose between the terror of sharing that road while on a bicycle, or they have to choose the completely unreliable bus system that we have, or they get in their car and they drive, burning fuel down Adams and polluting the air of all those residents and getting in the way of everybody who maybe has to get to the 55 to go to work and doesn't have the bike as an option. On Beach Boulevard, we could take tens of thousands of cars off the road by offering reliable bus service or even a streetcar service like Southern California used to have to help get a lot of that tourist traffic coming down beach off our roads. Plus, we'd have a nice streetcar and bus, bus route to Knott's Berry Farm in Anaheim. And this is just me thinking off the top of my head. We've got experts here who are incredible. Let's lean on them and see it as an opportunity, please. Thank you.
No more public comments.
All right. Next to the public hearing items, first item is zoning map amendment number 23002: Mapping Consistency Cleanup Project Churches and Schools. Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item, and we'll start with Commissioner Acosta Galván.
I spoke with staff.
No disclosures, thank you.
No disclosures.
I too spoke with staff.
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures.
Staff, may we have the presentation, please?
Yes. Maddy Welch, Associate Planner, will give the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's item is zoning map amendment, is a zoning map amendment to certain sites developed as churches and schools throughout the city. So to begin, the project consists of 18 parcels with the request to amend the current zoning designation of such parcels to bring them into conformance with their general plan designations. I want to note that this is only including those remaining churches and schools that do not match the general plan. All other churches and schools that are not included in this request are already in compliance and already have a zoning designation of PS and a general plan designation of PS. Staff sent out notices to each property owner of the subject sites included in this request, as well as notices to all properties within 500 feet of each subject site, for a total of 4,081 notices. And the notices sent to the property owners were sent via certified mail as requested by the Planning Commission. The general plan is a comprehensive blueprint that provides a framework for the long-term vision of the city. The general plan guides the decisions regarding land use in the city through the year 2040, and state law requires that every city adopt a general plan, and it also requires that the zoning map match the general plan. The state law is California Government Code Section 65860C. The zoning map is a tool that's used to implement the general plan land use element, and so with that, staff has identified 18 parcels consisting of churches and schools which have a zoning designation that do not match the general plan. The designation of these parcels, long-term, have already been decided through the general plan designations, and this amendment is just staff following that in order to match the zoning to be in compliance with state law. So as such, this amendment is prompted as a housekeeping item to clean up such inconsistencies. The sites included in today's request, as mentioned, already have a general plan designation of public semi-public, however, the zoning does not match. Therefore, this request is to change each existing zone to public semi-public, which is the intended designation for such uses as churches and schools. The proposed zoning designations will correspond with the existing use on site, as all of the sites are already developed as churches or schools. Before I begin, I do want to point out an excerpt from our general plan document, which is included on this slide here, regarding the public semi-public designation specifically. So this excerpt provides a description of what the public semi-public designation is and what uses are typically included in this designation, which are churches, schools, hospitals, and similar community service uses. I also want to point out that the public semi-public designation is unique in that it also has an underlying designation, which you will see on the maps. Next to PS, there's another designation in parentheses. And so what this underlying classification means is that in the event that the site were to ever change to a different use, that underlying designation is the preferred land use based from, from the general plan. So with that, I do want to note that even though there is a designation that's underlying in the parentheses, that does not mean that the site could be developed with that, by that. It means that they would still be required to go through a general plan amendment to change the general plan designation to that. And all properties throughout the city which have a PS general plan designation also have an underlying designation as well. And let's see here. So here is the existing zoning map for all the parcels that are included in this amendment. I know it's hard to see, but I will go through each parcel included in the request. And then here is the copy of the proposed zoning, and I also want to note that we have printed out copies behind you should you need to reference them at all. So now I'd like to go through each parcel to demonstrate what the amendment would look like, beginning with the sports field at Huntington Beach High School. So this parcel is developed as the Euler Diamond Softball Field, and it is currently zoned as open space for parks and recreation. The left image here demonstrates the existing zoning of that site, and the right image is demonstrating the existing general plan designation, which is public semi-public with the underlying designation that I had mentioned previously. So this amendment would change that sports field to PS, public semi-public, to match the rest of the high school, which is also public semi-public. Our next example is two parcels that are utilized by Mary's by the Sea Church. The northern parcel is used as a parking lot, and the southern parcel is where the church is located. They're both south of Orange, off of 10th and 11th Street. So again, on the left, it is the current zoning designation of these sites, which is residential medium-high density, and the existing general plan designation is public semi-public. So this amendment would change the current zoning of both parcels to public semi-public to be consistent with the general plan. Our third example is the Kinetik Academy School off of Utica and Beach Boulevard. Both sites, this is two parcels, and both sites are zoned RM, which is medium-density residential. And here are the existing zoning and general plan maps. The zoning map shows the RM designation, and the amendment would change it to public semi-public to match. Our fourth example is Joyful Noises Preschool, which also consists of Beach Bible Church as well. This parcel is located along Florida Street, just west of Beach Boulevard, and it is currently zoned medium-density residential as well, with a general plan designation of public semi-public. So here was, it was what the amendment would look like. It would change to public semi-public to match the general plan. And then example five is Beach Bible Church Parking Lot, which is along that same street, two parcels south. It is used as a parking lot for the church, and so the existing zoning designation is medium-density residential, but because it's used for church parking, it would be consistent with the general plan to be changed to public semi-public. Next, we have Sycamore Creek Community School and Oakview Preschool, located along Emerald Lane. The current zoning is open space for parks and recreation with a general plan of public semi-public. It also has an underlying designation of residential medium-density. The amendment would change the zone to public semi-public to match the general plan, and also match Oakview, Oakview School just south. Next, we have the Institute of Religion. This church is located west of Golden West Street. Here is the parcel, one parcel. The current zoning is low-density residential with a general plan of public semi-public. And here's what the amendment would look like. The Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints is our next example, located off of Heil Avenue. Again, this church is zoned low-density residential with a general plan of public semi-public, so the amendment would change to public semi-public. Next, we have Community Methodist Church. This is one parcel located off of Heil Avenue. The existing zoning is low-density residential with the general plan of public semi-public. So this amendment would again change it to public semi-public to match the general plan. And then we have St. Simon and Jude Church. It is also a school. This site consists of four parcels included in this request. They are all zoned low-density residential with a general plan designation of public semi-public. So this amendment would change that parcel, those parcels, to public semi-public. And then here is Seabreeze Church. This is located off of Gothard Street. This church is currently zoned research and technology, which is an industrial zone. It does have a general plan designation of public semi-public with the underlying designation of research and technology. This amendment would change the parcel to public semi-public to match. And then we have First Simone Congregational. This parcel is located off of Newland Street. It is currently zoned medium-density residential, general plan of public semi-public, and the amendment would also change it to public semi-public. And our last example is St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church. This is located along Talbert Avenue. The parcel is currently developed or zoned as residential agriculture, but it's developed as a church, and the general plan is public semi-public with an underlying designation of open space for parks. The general plan, or the zoning map amendment would change the zone to public semi-public to match the general plan. Staff has received 13 inquiries regarding tonight's request, requesting additional information, looking to see which parcel is, the parcel that they received the notice for. We did receive one correspondence in opposition, and that was received via email, and it was included as a late correspondence in the attachments to the agenda item tonight. With that, staff recommends approval based on the findings that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the general plan, its goals and policies. The zoning map amendment is necessary to comply with California Government Code Section 65860, and the proposed amendments will address nonconformities and bring the parcels into compliance with the general plan. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, do any Commissioners have any questions? Let's start with Don Kennedy.
Thanks for the presentation. A couple of questions. This is pretty straightforward today. As we go into other zoning changes where there's going to be residential potentially adverse effects depending on the abutting properties, it'll be a little bit more complex. But a couple of questions. So you sent out 4,081 notices. Thank you for taking the suggestion to send out the certification. Of the 4,081 notices, what was the response rate, if any, of people that received that letter?
So we received 13 correspondence, yes.
Okay. So, and basically asking for clarification, except the one late submission?
Correct. They were mostly asking, a couple asked for copies of the list of parcels included. Some were asking, inquiring why they may have received the notice, inquiring what the proposed changes were, but there were no concerns other than the one received via email.
Okay. Thank you. So I had asked in the last meeting for a copy of the letter and a copy of the envelope, which you did supply via email, but I did notice that I received a letter. At first, I thought maybe it was just, hey, let's send out one to Kennedy's as an example, but it looks like it does apply to me with the coastal cleanup in April. I would have the same questions as well. When I look at this, it says the City of Huntington Beach property owner, almost, you're not sure what they're trying to accomplish, what the property in question may be. I think there's room for clarity on this, as you said, that you did have people asking specifically that. So I would think you would want to make it a little bit more clear if possible, but I do have a suggestion for the envelope. The government works for the people. We want the people. Sometimes I feel like the government doesn't want civic involvement. So when we get to these other changes, like, for example, the letter that came from the architect, Cheryl DeMarco, and she raised some concerns about a zone, not necessarily for, for that property, a zone change, but for the people surrounding that property, the new uses that are available to that property with the zoning change. With that said, I think these letters should say something to the effect that, you know, open immediately your property rights, or your property may have adverse effects. If you want people to be aware of what is potentially happening adjacent to them or in the, you know, close proximity, you need to be more clear, because people get this letter in public hearing, that doesn't really say a lot. That's going to probably maybe not get open. You need a strong open rate, and I believe you need to make sure that these people understand, especially when we start getting into, like I said, not to be redundant, changes where you might have something that may be residential law. I don't even know what's coming downrange, but you might change it to an upzone that's going to allow for a lot of, a lot of different uses that they're currently not experiencing, that if you live right next door, you may want to have some commentary on that. So please take that to heart. And then I was just curious, I mean, because I do know who Jennifer Villasenor is, why on the letters that say secretary next to her name and not her title? Just curious about that.
That is technically the role she plays for the Planning Commission.
Secretary?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough. And was there a modification in the letter? Because what was sent via email doesn't match this envelope. Slight nuances, but when I asked for an example, you provided me an example, and I thought that would have been what was being used, but I'm not sure it was, because this is different than what was shown in the email. And I was wondering, if you already had an example, why would it change? Kind of leads me to believe that it wasn't really what was even shown in the email. I'm a skeptic.
Yeah. If you're referring to the difference in the envelope, it's because based on a certain size mailing, it has to be outsourced, and that mailing company has to create a label for that mailing.
Okay. But even, even the return address is different. I mean, small nuances, but you showed one example, I received another, and that's just...
Yeah. It just has to do where we have to use a service provider.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Next, Rick Wood.
Thank you. First comment is, I appreciate the presentation. I thought it was well done, well put together, and I appreciate the explanation of the designations in parentheses. I think that is helpful. I want to make sure I understood one of your comments, though, is, are all other schools and churches not included in this grouping currently zoned public space, open, or public semi-public?
That's correct. These are only including the remaining schools and churches that are not in compliance. All other churches and schools are already zoned public semi-public and have a general plan designation of public semi-public.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah. So just a quick clarification. I know Commissioner Kennedy was talking in regards, like, really adverse effects that would happen if this were to pass. So in your opinion, or based on the presentation, is there really a lot of adverse effects that we should be looking at? I mean, I appreciate that the staff went above and beyond, did the certified mail in addition to the pre-certified, non-certified mail, I believe, right? We first sent a non-certified mail, and then we sent a certified mail, correct?
The property owners of the parcels included in the request received certified mail.
Certified mail.
The properties within 500 feet received regular mail.
Okay. So you would say that the certified mail is already going above and beyond to ensure that the residents are, in fact, receiving these notices, correct?
Correct. And the notice that was sent to property owners states that it's because you own one of the properties included at the top.
Okay.
The notice that was sent to the properties surrounding states that because you reside within a vicinity of the parcels included.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And then with regards to adverse effects, is there anything you can clarify that, if anything, please?
So really, all we're doing is housekeeping, right? So the general plan got changed.
Exactly.
The government code says we need to change zoning to match general plan.
Yeah.
We're following state law. So when we get to the point where these sites are redeveloped, for instance, if a church were to cease to operate and they were to sell that property, or a school were to cease to operate and they were to sell it to a developer like Geisler School, then at that point, we will have entitlements for that project, and at that point, we can look at the questions you're asking.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I may point out to Commissioner Rodriguez, the certified letters went out to 13 people, not the, not the remainder. So above and beyond to the property owners, yes. Everybody else just received a letter, and that gives me an opportunity to ask, what's the postpart date on that? And why do we use the Huntington Beach Wave or a publication that, I've been here for 20 years, I've never even seen the thing? I've been, I've been here my whole life, but even in my current, I've never once read or even heard of that paper.
Yeah. There's public noticing requirements in the zoning code that require for a public hearing to be posted in certain, I can't, I don't want to, I could have, I'd have to pull it up, but it basically requires a certain amount of places that a notice needs to be posted. And that can be a local newspaper, that can be, there's examples of what it can be.
Add to that, that the city council and city clerk selected the HB Wave as the place where we would advertise.
And by the way, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm not talking about today. I'm talking about down the road when there's, these are already, you know, these are built, they're just conforming. There's going to be other properties that will change, like, for example, when we're talking about the ones that are on Main Street that have the commercial designation that would be changing to residential. Had we not made some noise, if you will, about that? If you recall, they wanted us to vote on 141 properties in one vote, because I asked questions, they've broken them out into different tranches, and now they're doing a much better job. But there will be adverse effects to people when we start having these zoning changes. And if you were a property owner in one of those areas, you would want to know, and you would want to make sure that if something, for example, you were adjacent to residential medium-density, and I'm just being facetious, because I'm not exactly sure what zoning change we have is going to become commercial general or something that may allow uses like Mr. Marco stated in her letter, that are not there currently, and you live next door, and there's a 50-foot building there that wouldn't have been there before, that's going to be a problem for some people. That's what I'm talking about.
So let me ask you this. Based on your observations or knowledge of public semi-public, what would be an adverse effect of a semi-public?
I'm not talking about this, this tranche. I'm not talking about this.
Well, I understand, but...
I'm talking about...
The staff is going above and beyond, and they're meeting the needs of your requests originally a couple of weeks, months ago, actually, at this point. So if you have a better suggestion, I would recommend that we reach out...
I did, I did make a suggestion. Number one, make the envelope a little bit more inviting, maybe, so that more people open it. When you send out over 4,000 letters and you get 13 people responding, and 13 of those people have questions, first off, that tells me the letter is not well-written, because they don't even understand it. And secondly, that response rate will grow, I would imagine, when we have things that are not already built or that aren't just going to be matching what, you know, a church should be, this zone. And if it wasn't, so be it. Nobody's going to really have anything to say, but there will be other tranches of properties that will have potential adverse effects. If you don't agree with me, that's fine.
No, I'm not saying I don't. How about, let's say this, maybe you and I at the next, we get a list and we walk the neighborhoods, and we knock on doors.
That may be, hey, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. Let's do it. There we go.
I'll go on record. I want to be part of the 600 block with each of the owners.
I have James DeMarco on my list here. Is that somebody that...
He's a public speaker, so when you are finished with your typical questions, we open the public hearing.
Oh, okay. All right. I saw that on my speaker list here. Okay. Thank you. I just have, I just have one question, and it's in regards to Ms. Cheryl DeMarco's letter. She, she stated in her, in her, or in her email about all the possible uses of a public semi-public property. But I think you explained it when you said that the, in the zoning, in the, in the new zoning amendment, that in the, in the parentheses, that's the preferred, if, that would be the preferred zoning for that, that, that property, if, in fact, it changed owner's hands. So if it's PS, P, RL in parentheses, that's low-density residential, and that would be the preferred uses for that particular property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. An example of that that Ricky mentioned was the Geisler School.
Okay.
That was a elementary school that was redeveloped to single-family, low, or, yeah, single-family.
Okay.
Chair, to add to that, that's only if the new user or new buyer would like to change the general plan designation.
Right.
So if I were to buy a close school site, and I want to maintain the public semi-public designation and pick a use within the PS zone that's on that list.
Right.
I can do that. I don't have to change the zoning. I can do that. I don't have to change the zoning. But you might have noticed that the majority of the uses in the PS zoning district require an entitlement.
Right.
It's not permitted by rights. So, if and when a new use is proposed, they will have to come back here for a conditional use permit. And then, the other thing I wanted to add to is, our experience has been, I would say, in the past 10, 15, 20 years, is, we've seen closed school sites that have been sold with the underlying designation, and the vast majority of them, I think they all have been, actually, purchased by home builders, and they've changed the general plan and zoning to the underlying designation, which is usually a residential designation that matches the neighborhood.
Right.
That's the idea behind it. It hasn't been a problem.
Well, again, I just want to, I want to address Ms. DeMarco's concerns. We're not thinking about on our PS in parentheses, RL, we're not going to put a cemetery, or a convalescent facility, or a daycare center, or hospitals, or crematoriums.
If we do get an application for any of those items that are a use listed in the PS zoning district, they'll have to apply for a conditional use permit, and the commission will have to review it and decide if they can make the findings or not.
Okay.
And if you can't make the findings, then you have the opportunity to deny it.
Right.
Or perhaps you can modify it, so that you can make the findings.
Right. Okay. And that would be for any of the other, you know, we looked at, we looked at 14 properties today, but that's any, that's for all the other 100 that are in our town that are already currently designated or zoned, PS, P, parentheses, RL.
Correct. Yeah, so all the, all the public schools are PS, both general plan and zoning, St. Bonaventure, First Christian Church, the LDS Church on 17th. The bigger churches are under that same designation.
Okay.
They only have a few that we need to get caught up and get cleaned up.
Right, right. Okay, so we're not doing anything to these 14 properties, that the rest of schools and churches in Huntington Beach are...
Following suit.
Okay, thank you. Is this a new list I have here?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Kennedy?
Just to restate almost the obvious, nobody's referencing the fact that the DeMarco letter, and I believe this gentleman might be part of the DeMarco family, he's got the same last name, maybe we'll hear what he has to say. All I am saying is, prior to the land use change and the zoning change on all the churches and schools, or churches around the city that currently do comply, at one point, the land use was probably agriculture. So, when they went from agriculture to church, I'm sure the noticing ability wasn't quite as good as it may be now, but you would hope that the people that surrounded those parcels were notified that, hey, this celery field is going to become a church, probably to no concern. But the bottom line is, we're not talking about the ones that are existing, we're not even talking about these. What we're talking about is, conceptually, what could happen down the road. It brings me back to the noticing factor, you know, we want to make sure that the public is aware when there are going to be changes. And again, nobody's saying you're going to rip down one of these churches and put a crematorium. She was referencing the possibility, just showing contextual value of what could happen. That's how I took the letter. We'll let him elaborate on that, and that's all I'm saying. But the one property right there, Seabreeze, so, that's been in existence for a long time. So, you had the general land use change in 2017, and Seabreeze, prior to that, was the Lindborg Racquet Club. So, how long has it been RT? Because why would a racquet club be there, which was there for decades, be RT?
RT's only been around, I would say, maybe five years or so, so not very long.
Okay, so...
So, a lot of those properties used to be perhaps IG or IL, which are longstanding zoning districts in the industrial zone, but we created RT, I want to say, around five years ago or so.
And why do you create new zoning after the land, the general land plan is already in play? To accommodate the potential for growth, the way you guys see it?
I want to say, I want to say the RT evolved out of the general plan update. So, I wasn't a part of that discussion, so I couldn't elaborate more, but I want to say that they went hand in hand.
I mean, that's kind of my point. You know, when you, when you have a general plan, and you have zoning changes, or the general plan, by virtue of that plan, you render properties non-conforming. So, it gives you the ability to kind of sway the way you want to see the zone, because you're going to say, we're being state compliant. I just, you know, again, I'm going to be a skeptic on everything, because, you know, I don't believe everything is just as it appears on the surface value. So, that's just the way I'm going to conduct my business at the Planning Commission. I'm going to ask you guys a lot of questions. I'm going to be super cynical and skeptic, skeptical on a lot of these things, and I'm going to make you guys prove out why you do that stuff.
Commissioner Wood?
Thank you. I want to clarify again that we are not doing any zoning changes here. We are getting a zoning map to conform to a general plan. There is no zoning changes occurring, correct?
So, they are changing from the existing zone to, like, for example, this one, the Seabreeze Church. It is a zone change from research technology to public, semi-public.
Consistent with the general plan.
Consistent, correct.
We are cleaning up zoning to match general plans.
And the general plan is the one that dictates.
Correct. It's the long-term vision. They're updated ever so often, and the zoning map is a tool that's used to implement the general plan.
Right. But you're not changing the zone. The zoning is what is in the general plan.
Well, these are the parcels that we've identified that are out of compliance, that are not consistent, so they are changing to match the general plan.
Correct.
That was written just seven years ago, to be clear. It's not a longstanding document, otherwise, these would have already been conforming. They became non-conforming, because seven years ago, you changed the general plan.
Sorry, I mean the general plan document in itself. Every city is required to have a general plan document.
I understand that, but when you changed it in 2017, you rendered some of these non-conforming, and that's why we're cleaning them up. So, yes, Rick, it's a change.
Okay. The other comment I had was, if, as we go forward with these, as Commissioner Kennedy has pointed out, I think you've done a good job with grouping them certain ways. So, I just want to say I appreciate that, and I hope that helps going forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you, Chair Twining. Just as you were saying, some items that you discussed earlier, and a question to staff, in the future, when developers or applicants come back and want to do something with that property, I don't know, may happen, may not happen, who knows, they still have to come to the Planning Commission, correct?
That's correct. If you look on the land use table in our zoning code, under the public, semi-public section, almost every single use requires an entitlement. So, almost any of the uses would be required to come back to a hearing body for discretionary review, and that's because they are, they could be more sensitive uses. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Pellman?
Why, thank you. Okay, I think, for me, just saying, first, let me back up. I wanted to thank staff and Mr. Ramos for splitting out the sections for us to review. It's much easier to look at what you're asking us to do, so I want to thank you very much for that. The second thing, that, this is more of a comment. I had asked this question before at the, a couple meetings ago, and I think it's maybe a little bit of what they're saying. They don't understand why some of the properties were, you want to say, designed, or whatever, without the zoning in place, years ago, like, 35 years ago. And there's been two zoning updates since then, and it hadn't been caught. And I think that's part of the, because I would assume that when it goes through zoning and all of this stuff, it, why wasn't it caught? You know, that's what I think is kind of tripping us, or at least me, you know, so I look at this. But I wanted to thank you for the explanations on all of these, and I, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Pellman. Commissioner Acosta Galván?
Yeah, just a quick question. Most of these are located in residentially zoned areas, right? So, because of that, their maximum, the height requirement, the maximum height would be 18 feet, is that right? It wouldn't be the 45 feet that's actually in public, semi-public?
So, changing from the residential zone that it is to be public, semi-public, the maximum height allowed in the public, semi-public zone is 50 feet, but it also, there's a provision listed there, that if it's within 45 feet of the district boundary, so if it's a budding residential, within that 45 feet next to the residential, the maximum height is 18 feet.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak? My, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot all about you.
Thank you. I just wanted to go on record as well. I do appreciate staff. I know it's extra work, but separating these out, I know, Commissioner Kennedy, you would ask for that. It has been helpful. It's easier to digest. It's more work for you guys, but I think it's a better process. So, I do appreciate that, and I'll be reserving my comments for the more fun stuff in June.
Is there any more questions? Okay. With no further questions, we'll now open a public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have one public speaker, James DeMarco. Please come down to the microphones. Thank you.
Hello, yes, I am the DeMarco family. My wife is Cheryl. She had a client commitment tonight, so I apologize. Since I'm the only speaker, I hope you let me speak a little bit longer, because I think this is a very important subject. My wife, being an architect, we are definitely not opposed to development and new innovations, and new, you know, new ideas for the community. So, I want to make sure you are aware of that, because obviously, we make our living off of change. The first thing I want to ask is, you said that her objection was late, and I don't see a deadline anywhere on this.
That's just the term, once the agenda is already posted, that we consider as, like, a late correspondence, so then we upload it, once we receive it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, it's still accepted?
Yeah, it's included in the agenda, yeah.
Okay, I understand. And I think the reason why you only got 13 responses, and there's only, well, you're not here for this, there's only two people here, is simply because, like Mr., what Kennedy said, it's a housekeeping item. Don't, you know, look over there. Everything's okay. I think it's, it's not proper notice to tell people that it's not going to affect your property, and I will give you some adverse examples of how it will dramatically affect people that live right next to it, us being one of them. That's why, you know, we're, also, we're here for both purposes. And it says these amendments will not cause any changes to your property. Well, of course, it won't cause a physical change to your property, but it will definitely cause a change in value when you have a 50-foot-tall structure, right in the middle of a, I mean, some of these, some of these are in the middle of residential areas. And the picture of St. Simon and Jude, if you can put that up, that's where we live near. My wife took her laser measurer and shot the eve from the ground, the one of, the one of the picture of the church. There it is. That is approximately 48 feet tall. If you've ever driven by Magnolia in Indianapolis, you know that that's, that roof is massive. So, that is what's going to be potential next to people's properties. And when you said that it takes a CUP to do any, anything else than a school, my wife's experience with the city is that CUPs are granted very easily. So, that's, that's a concern. And if there's, you know, if there's a cemetery next to us, or a rehab center, drug abuse center, heliport, maybe, I don't know, the properties that are going to be most affected are the ones that have, you said have multiple, multiple parcels.
We'll give you, give him two more minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Since he's the only speaker.
Multiple parcels. You said Kinetic School had two parcels, and SSJ has four parcels. So, I think that is a, that is a concern, because if the Diocese of Orange says, we need to raise money, we're going to sell two of the four. And by the way, if you've ever driven by there, it's a grass field where the kids play. That originally was part of the bean fields you talked about, and it was going to be another street in the middle with houses on each side. But the church ended up buying that from the developer who decided to, you know, to sell it to them. So, if it becomes residential, that's fine, but a CUP could be granted for any of these other uses, especially when they could sell that grass field off, and it could become something, it could even become a recycling center. Now, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's going to happen. It's not likely that any of these other uses can hit, but it's possible. A recycling center, as you can imagine, would smell horrendous, because of all the, you know, the liquid and the food that's left over in there. Things that, you can even have, it says, according to, according to your, your land use control, see, this is part of the, another part of our problem, is that some of the CUPs would be granted by planning, and some would be granted by zoning, because there's designations. PC, L1, and it says, PC, conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission. L1 says, city-owned facilities are automatically permitted, but anything else requires a conditional use permit from the zoning administrator. So, there seems like there'd be a lot of inconsistencies there, when you have, have you done that.
Thank you very much.
That's what I wanted to say, and I hope that you understand that there's a lot, it's very complicated.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
We have no further speakers.
All right, Planning Commissioners, we can deliberate on this issue right now, so let me get, who wants to speak? You can say aye, because it's not coming up on my screen right now. You can just hold your hand up. Nobody? Okay. Let's see. Do we have a motion to approve this update? Is that what it would be, an update? Yeah. Do we have a motion to approve this update?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Okay.
I will second.
Let's call for the vote.
No, we got to say it, right?
Oh, excuse me, what?
We, I need to, I believe I need to say, a motion to find the proposed project categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15183, and recommend approval of zoning map amendment number, did I get the right one? Yeah, 23-002 with findings.
And I'll second that.
Okay, let's go for the vote.
Commissioner Kennedy, did you mean to abstain?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, I'm just checking.
It's going to pass, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, we have all ayes. Commissioner, we have six ayes. Commissioner Kennedy abstains, motion carries.
Can I just say one thing? Do I have that prerogative?
Yeah.
I just want to address Mr. Connor. I have a lot of confidence in our, in our Planning Commission, and our zoning commission, and I can, I can tell you, I don't think we're going to be passing anything that's going to be adverse to the properties on, you know, to these 14 properties. I think, you know, we have dozens and dozens of other ones around the, around the city, and we're not going to put a crematorium, or a sewer, or a hospital, or anything that doesn't fit with the neighborhood. I don't think our city council will allow that. I don't think our, you know, any future Planning Commissions will allow that. So, I have a lot of confidence in them, but I thank you for your comments, and I thank your wife for her letter. It was very helpful, and as you can see, we did discuss it quite extensively, so good luck to you.
Chair, I wanted to add that the Planning Commission's recommendation on this item will be forwarded to the city council.
Thank you. All right. Next on the zone, the next item is the zoning text amendment, number 23-002, zoning update. Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item. We'll start with Commissioner Acosta Galván.
I spoke to staff.
No disclosures, thank you.
I spoke to staff.
I spoke to staff.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
Staff, may we have the report?
Yes, Joanna Cortez, Principal Planner, will be giving the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Twining, and members of the Planning Commission. The item for you is zoning text amendment number 23-002.
The item for you is zoning text amendment number 23-002. I'm going to skip really quick to the request first, and then I'll go back to the background. But the request for today's ZTA is to amend eight chapters of the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance, the HBZSO, and the purpose of it is to update definitions, to delete definitions that are repeated in the ZSO or other codes, expand the definitions for clarification purposes. We are also clarifying the entitlement process, removing outdated design standards, codifying building separations, projections, and setbacks for patio covers, clarifying the home occupation permit process, updating standards for fences and walls in the residential zone, and updating some of our parking standards. In addition to those, to that part of the amendment, we're also updating Section 2.5 of the Beach Edinger Corridor Specific Plan, the BECSB, and we're updating the standards for street improvement specifically. It's to clarify the allowable tree species, delete in-loo fee process, remove waivers for regular street frontages, and create a process for irregular sidewalk widths along the public frontages. And we'll go more into detail a little bit later in the presentation. So just a quick background, this is really a refresher from February's study session. The last comprehensive update for the ZSO or the zoning and subdivision ordinance was back in 2019, and the last update for the Beach Edinger Corridor Specific Plan occurred last year. It is considered a best management practice for cities to complete periodic updates such as these to address common clarifications and issues that arise through the day-to-day operations and interactions of staff, residents, and business owners. The proposed amendments to address emerging technologies that are not contemplated under the current zoning ordinance, and continuous effort to improve customer service, ensure requirements are clear to all readers and responsive to the needs of the residents and the business owners. When the item was first introduced during the study session last month, there were some questions that arose from the planning commission, and they're detailed in the staff report. Many of those questions were addressed during that meeting, but staff had some additional information or some follow-up that we still needed to do, specifically about artificial turf. I know there was a question, like, there were some concerns about artificial turf and potential issues related to it. Additionally, staff received a comment from the public with similar concerns, and after some consideration, staff has removed adding artificial turf as part of required landscaping. Another question that arose from last study session were some of the current specific plan projects, you know, projects that would be affected by the current right-of-way issues that we're having along Beach Boulevard. So some of the projects that would be affected are listed right here. We have Jamboree Housing at 18431 Beach Boulevard, and G&amp;M Oil Convenience Store at 19442. So I'm going to go right into the actual amendments, chapter by chapter, and we'll go more in-depth with the specific plans, when I know there were some questions about it. So attachment number two of your packet is a matrix that lists all of the changes proposed with this ZTA. You're more than welcome to follow that, or you can follow along with the PowerPoint. Some of the definitions from Chapter 203 have been amended. They've either been deleted because the definition exists in other parts of the ZSO or other codes, like the municipal code. Example is exotic animals, required window. Some definitions have been deleted to align with other, like, previous updates with the ZSO, such as, or updates with this current text amendment, such as courts, satellite dish, communication, whip antenna, qualifying senior resident. And then we've amended some of the definitions to clarify or update a definition, such as attached structures, bay windows, specific event. Within Chapter 210, a definition of neighborhood notification was added to define the process for those items listed in the land use table of this chapter. That same text was carried over to Chapters 211 through 218. We also clarified and codified the building separation regulations related to patio covers. We eliminated the courts provision of that particular chapter as it's an underutilized and require, just provision really, and requires a specific architectural style, this is an example. It's a little, it conflicts with other provisions of the ZSO as well as our existing urban design guidelines, so staff is proposing to eliminate that section. Then we move on to Chapter 230. The amendments of Chapter 230 include incorporating some of the changes that I just mentioned from Chapter 210, so just carrying over those changes to Chapter 230. Clarifying the home occupation permits, such as clarifying the permit process for residents, expanding on what uses may qualify for a permit, and prohibits or specifies that we prohibit renting of homes for commercial purposes. Further down in Chapter 230, specifically to Section 230.88 in our fencing and yards section, this amendment, the amendments that are being proposed is to remove setback provisions for walls, fences in our RHA zone, which are our skinny lots downtown, that's typically where you'll, where you'll see them. Currently, building permits are required for wall, are not required for walls that are 42 inches or less. However, current standards currently create a scenario where property owners may inadvertently construct a wall at the incorrect location, incorrect setback, if there's no plan or building permit required. So the purpose of this revision for this section is to help property owners avoid costly scenarios where completed walls have to be demolished, or relocated, or require some type of entitlement, such as a conditional use permit, in order to rectify the situation. The code currently allows lattice extensions for perimeter fences and walls for additional privacy, but it's a little unclear how open or solid the wall extensions may be. So to avoid extensions that do not meet the code, staff is proposing to add language to kind of clarify what can be done, what can be added for lattice, and, you know, we've added language that says that lattice means 50% open. And right here, I've provided some pictures to kind of show you an example of what we're talking about. So this would be acceptable. The desire for more privacy and uniform aesthetic is common request that we receive at the counter from the public, for, specifically for site and rear property walls. So there's a recommendation to raise the maximum allowable height for site and rear perimeter walls from six feet to eight feet, so by right, meaning you would not have to go through any special permit. It could be done, get a building permit to do that. And that's some of the, that's what we're providing, proposing in this amendment. And so the whole purpose is that these amendments provide residents different options for their fencing and privacy needs. And so this is, these photos right here are examples of what, some of the requests that we get, and ultimately, they, a resident would have different options on what to do or for privacy purposes in their house. In addition to some of those, that portion of the fencing section, we've also done additional changes to eliminate outdated provisions for garden walls. It's already covered in other sections of this, of Chapter 230.88. And so we've eliminated that, eliminated anything that's inconsistent, just to match the changes that we just went over in the previous slide. Chapter 231 is a new section, so specifically Section 231.02.G is a new section. It's a response to public inquiries that staff has received over the years. For residential purposes, many property owners have extra vehicles, they have classic cars, and they'd like to store them on-site. In lieu of having them having to store it off-site, this is an option for residents. So they, so in order to have them just have it on-site, the proposed provisions would allow additional parking options for single-family residential property owners. If they comply with required on-site parking, any other surplus parking could be accommodated through the use of mechanical stackers and lifts, and it could be done by right without any special permit. There's design guidelines and everything they would have to comply with, but it is an option for single-family residences, and it's only for surplus parking. Then for when it comes to commercial and industrial properties, many owners have inquired in the past about providing additional parking in the form of mechanical stackers and lifts. The proposed percentages that you see right here says up to 20% is a CUP to the zoning administrator, and then 21%, or 21 to 40% of the required parking being proposed through the stackers is a CUP to the planning commission. It is consistent with our downtown specific plan in the sense that the tandem, tandem mechanical parking and associated bodies will align with existing tandem valet parking standards in our specific plan, which operate with parking attendants similar to how these would operate. And so we're just kind of taking some of those standards and carrying them over here. And right here, you have an example of a commercial lift, right here, and says, "By creating a process for this design, there's additional parking options for businesses and property owners in a manner that's consistent with the zoning code." We would treat them like parking structures, so everything would have to be fully enclosed with, it would also require design review board review, so it couldn't be done just over the counter. There is a process for them. Studies would have to be required to compare traffic intensity, making sure that there's sufficient amount of short-term parking and attendance would be needed to ensure minimal traffic and parking impacts, not having them encroach into the public right-of-ways. There would be a requirement for a backup janitor with a manual override, and then there would also be required covenants to be recorded for the way, for operation and for attendance. So there is a process for them, but it is a, a new technology that may help some of our commercial industrial businesses. Then in Chapter 241, we've added language to clarify the required permit for a waiver of development standards, and then we've added, we've amended the notification period to be consistent with other sections of the code. So it would be 10 calendar days versus 10 working days, which is the standard that we normally do for notifications. So the final section of the zoning text amendment pertains to the Beach Edinger Corridor Specific Plan. So the specific plan includes portions of Edinger. I had to break it up in two. It's pretty big. Portions of Edinger right here, and the majority of the properties along Beach Boulevard, so just south of the 405 and south of Edinger, most of the properties with a small portion on Main Street are part of the specific plan. Then you'll see, there's only a handful of properties just south of Adams. And as you can see in the maps, the areas within the specific plan are broken up into different segments, so they all have different colors, and in each segment, they have different development standards. So public street improvements are code requirements that are part of the development process for larger properties, improvements citywide. This is a standard. If you're doing a large development, you're going to have to do some, you may be required to do some type of public street improvement. So the existing condition of a site will determine what that, what type of public improvement may be required, and it can include new sidewalks, curbs, gutters, landscape planters, and street dedications. While most street and sidewalks are within the control of the city, certain streets, such as Beach Boulevard, are owned by the state agency Caltrans. So while the property owner may offer to dedicate, so let me, before I continue, I'm going to go to the next slide, I think, to provide a visual. This right here is a section of Beach Boulevard. This is the existing right-of-way, so from back of sidewalk, across the street to the other back of sidewalk, these little orange lines, this is our existing right-of-way. That includes sidewalks, landscape planters, our streets, any center mediums, that is our existing right-of-way. What we're focusing on in what this text amendment is our public frontage, which is this piece between the back of the curve up to this orange line. So it's our sidewalk and plant strips, right here. So when we say, we kind of throw out right-of-way and public frontage interchangeably, this is the area that we're referring to for the purposes of this text amendment. So currently, this particular, you'll see right here, we, this is all owned, from this point to this point, is owned by Caltrans. So just to kind of give you a vision, I'll go back to this slide right now. So what will happen is that many of our existing sidewalk widths do not comply with the Beach Edinger Corridor Specific Plan, and if there's any type of changes or improvements that need to be done, any type of dedications, it, because the city does not own that, that piece of property, it is, it requires approval from Caltrans. So the Beach End Recorder Specific Plan has very specific design requirements and guidelines for tree species, sidewalks, landscape planters, and street furniture along the public right-of-way. The requirements also include minimum widths for sidewalks and landscape planters. So you can see right here, uh, oh, I'm so sorry. You'll see right here...
You don't have, you don't have a laser pointer, do you?
Um...
A laser pointer?
Let me see. Can you see it better now? Can you see my mouse right here? I'll go slower. So, right here, so you, orange to orange, existing right-of-way, all owned by Caltrans. That includes sidewalk, landscape planner, streets, all of that is owned by Caltrans. In the specific plan, you're required to have a minimum six-foot-wide sidewalk, and depending on what segment of the specific plan you're in, your landscape planner area can vary between four feet to nine feet in width. So ultimately, you'll need at least 10 to 15 feet in order to comply with some, whatever street improvements for your property, depending on whatever segment you're in. So many Beach Boulevard properties have existing public right-of-way frontages which range between seven feet to 15 feet wide. So already, we have some properties that are deficient and would need approval or have Caltrans accept a dedication in order to accommodate those street improvements. So when we go back to this, you know, we'll offer the, to dedicate to Caltrans to comply with the specific plan, it's really up to Caltrans whether they'll accept that dedication. And while some projects have been approved in the past, it appears that there's been some sort of change in the process that, in terms of their review process, to determine whether they'll accept that dedication, which can range from, range from 18 to 24 months, and does not guarantee that Caltrans will accept the dedication. So if they don't accept the dedication, this creates a situation where the property owner cannot comply with city requirements and cannot finalize their building permit. Again, just to reemphasize, these are for projects that have already been improved. Street improvements do not, are not done, do not occur until a project has been approved by whoever the hearing body is. So they'll get, they'll go through the process with planning, they'll come to, let's say, planning commission, they'll go through plan check and everything, and at the very end, they'll be trying to review, like, get approval from Caltrans to complete their permit in order to get that final approval, and they'll be kind of stuck in limbo. And that is really the intent, is to kind of create some clarity and some certainty for a lot of our business owners along Beach Boulevard. So again, this is our existing section right here, requires six-foot-wide planters, I'm sorry, six-foot-wide sidewalk, four-to-nine-foot plant strip. That is the requirement. We currently range between seven feet to 15 feet wide. We're already at a deficiency for a lot of properties. They're going to struggle. Should they get approved through us and have code requirements and all the approvals they need from the city, once they get to Caltrans, we're a little limited because it's an outside agency. So the proposal today is to provide an alternative design for them. So you can see right here where previously, in the previous slide, you had some type of landscape planter right here. What we're suggesting with this amendment is that there is no landscape requirement for right-of-way areas or public frontage areas that are less than 10 feet wide. So for example, if we have, and what that does, it allows us to work with what you already have without the need of dedicating or requesting to dedicate to Caltrans. So it allows us to just work together and not create that 18 to 24-month process. So it'll go from this potentially, right here with the landscape planner, to just a full sidewalk, only for properties that are less than 10 feet wide. And so one of, we had a recent experience right here, this is our Subaru dealership. We kind of brought it up during the last study session, but I kind of wanted to show the finished result. But the Subaru dealership kind of had, went through a five-year process where they experienced that, where they were in limbo, where they, there was nothing the city could do to really intervene for them to get that final approval that they needed. They had gone through the proper channels, gotten a review, their review, been reviewed and approved for their improvements for their site. However, when it came down to the point of obtaining that final permit, they were not able to because an outside agency was now in control of that permit, because we don't have control over any improvements along Beach Boulevard. So I bring that up to kind of show how potentially, we kind of use some of the, what we're... So I bring that up to kind of show how potentially, we kind of use some of the, what we're proposing today in this text amendment, we kind of implemented it here in Subaru. And you can kind of see that while there doesn't have the landscape planner here, and what they did instead was added additional landscaping right here, and it created almost a similar effect to the property next door. And you can see that it looks, it's pretty flush, it matches. So it allowed them to finalize their permit. So that is the primary change that's being proposed for the Beach End Quarter Specific Plan. However, in addition to that, we've proposed to eliminate waivers or payment of in lieu fees. And so instead of doing that, where we'd like, instead of getting the fees, we want to have them actually do the improvement. And we've created different paths in order to accomplish that, assuring that the improvements get done and that they get done at the same time of the development. So all, we, we've added some language to kind of clarify the process and ensure that the city is getting the improvements that they need along Beach Boulevard while just really working with what we have control over. So staff is recommending approval because we are cleaning up the ZSO and the specific plan to approve the clarity and address the deficiencies and maintain currency based on what's already been presented. We want to codify existing policies and code interpretations and allow select entitlement requests to be permitted by right. And ultimately, we, staff recommends approval of this amendment because we think it results in better customer service by providing clear requirements as well as prompt and cost-effective review process, and it's consistent with the general plan's goals and policies. Staff, as mentioned before, received only one comment from the public, and it was related to the artificial turf concern, which we've addressed and have removed from the definitions of landscaping. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. I also have public works staff here who have some more knowledge, working directly with Caltrans. Thank you.
Okay, who's pushing their button? I think I'll start. Can you just, I have a simple question. Can you define dedicated roadway? You talk about, you know, a developer can't get a dedicated, or they try to get a dedicated roadway, but that has to go to Caltrans and it takes forever.
Sure.
Can you just explain what the dedicated roadway means?
Sure. So I'll use this as an example. I think it's a little, might be easier to visualize. This right here, this public frontage, like I said, is existing right-of-way. Let's say this, the requirement of the code is, it requires six-foot wide sidewalk and a four-foot wide plant strip. So you need a total from back of curve all the way to the back of sidewalk, you need a total of 10 feet, but you only have seven feet right now. It requires you as the property owner to offer to dedicate a portion of your property to Caltrans in order to meet that requirement. And then it's up to Caltrans whether they want to accept it in order to make that improvement. And if there's anything else I want to add. But that's, that's really what it is. So you imagine a piece of your property right here on this private frontage area is going to go towards this area right here to expand, to ensure that you have at least 10 feet here.
You're, you're offering to move your property line backwards, take less property? And, and the part you move backwards, you're saying, Caltrans, will you take the piece that I'm moving away from so that I can meet city requirements? And Caltrans doesn't necessarily like to add to their...
Isn't that kind of a gift to?
Yeah, but it doesn't mean, yeah, but it doesn't mean they'll take it.
Okay.
They sometimes don't want extra liability, extra...
Pavement work.
Yeah.
Okay, I get it. Okay, I got it now. All right.
Is that done by easement or is there a new lot line drawn?
It's an easement.
Is there any questions from, okay, go ahead. Nothing's showing up up here, so have at it.
I, I just wanted to clarify, is this only new properties that are being developed, not required for existing properties, or only if they change ownership or businesses or whatever, then they go into that whole thing?
So the specific plan, it's for all new development or new property, but if they, let's say they, the specific plan has guidelines. If you go up to a certain percentage, you improve it like a certain amount, it will trigger additional street improvement requirements.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Twining. Thank you, Joanna, for the presentation. I have a question with regards to the, this specific, the Beach End Quarter specific plan, section 2.5. How much time do you anticipate this will save applicants, from 18 to 24 months to, what, 12 months maybe, or?
I guess 18 to 24 months if Caltrans accepts it. There's no guarantee that they'll accept it if it requires dedication to them. So we're kind of, we're putting them in a position where they can't comply with their code requirements.
And does Caltrans have like a sort of planning commission as well, that, that this goes through that? Or is it just like ministerial approval or?
I'm not aware of a planning commission per se for Caltrans. The first few projects that came forward, they went through their encroachment permit section. So encroachment permits does have a process where if there's a need for a dedication, they can, they have a mechanism to do that. So the first few projects, they were able to do that until they, for lack of a better term, they got wind of the overall plan and where there would be a need for long strips of additional right-of-way that they would have to take and maintain. And that's when they changed the process. They said they didn't want to do it with the encroachment permit process any longer, and they introduced a QMAP process, which is the 18 to 24-month process with no guarantee.
Wow. Okay. And then my next question is on section, or chapter 211. And on the last, on, on the changes where it says neighborhood notification refers to use classifications that require an administrative permit by the director, I don't, it's for both 211 and 212. I don't see that up here. Is that because it pertains to a different section of a chapter and we just received this section or, yeah? Okay, perfect. And then this is just a, a question for Ricky Ramos. I know we, during the last planning commission team, we approved a project that had lifts in the downtown area. Do you, were those implemented? Do you know if those were actually installed or no? No?
You might have been talking about one that got appealed to city council. I think that was denied.
Oh, the, oh, the project, the whole project? Okay.
Yep. That's my recollection.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, with no, any more questions? Okay, with no further questions, we'll now open it up for a public hearing.
We have no one signed up to speak.
That's great. Okay. If there's no other speakers, we'll now close the public hearing. Says bang the gavel. Planning commissioners, would you like to deliberate? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by, and we have a second. So, all right, we make a motion to amend eight chapters of the, wow, it's a long one.
Eight chapters of the ordinance, dot, 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 dot. Planning commissioner takes the act, find the action. Find the project exempt from additional environmental review pursuant to city council resolution number 4501, class 20, which supplements SEQA, because the request is a minor amendment to the zoning ordinance that does not change the development standards, intensity, or density in accordance with the Beach Boulevard Corridor Specific Plan Program EIR number 808008, certified by the planning commission, I didn't realize this was so long. Certified by the planning commission December 8th, 2009, SEQA guide and SEQA's guideline sections 15162, 15163. No subsequent EIR supplement to the EIR need to be prepared for this ZTA, and no further environmental view or documentation is required, and recommend approval of zoning text amendment ZTA number 23-002 to the city council with findings.
Okay, so we have a, a, a motion from Commissioner Adams and a second from Commissioner Rodriguez. Can we vote?
We have all ayes, motion carries.
All right.
Chair, I want to mention that the planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the city council.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is consent calendar. Are there, are there two sets of minutes? Okay. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes as submitted?
I, I'll be abstaining from the second one just because I wasn't here, so if we could just do it one by one.
So we can vote on each one separately. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I, I will second it.
Okay, we have a second. So should we, shall we vote on the first one right now?
Yes, we're voting on the, to approve the January 23rd, 2024 planning commission minutes as submitted.
And who made the motion?
Mr. Rodriguez made the motion, and Commissioner Pellman seconded it.
I was just clarifying it.
We have all ayes, motion carries.
Okay, let's, let's make a motion for the February minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission minutes for the February 13th meeting.
I'll second.
And I'll be abstaining.
All right, and so can we have the vote?
Yep. Hold on one moment. We have six ayes. Commissioner Rodriguez subsides, motion carries.
Excellent. Okay, before we close the evening, planning commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? We'll start, oh, sorry, did I miss something?
No, I do. I have something.
Okay, we'll start on my right with Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any other comments tonight.
Okay, and I believe Commissioner Pellman has a report from her committee meeting.
I have it all typed up too. I'm the liaison, the planning commission liaison to the HRB, which is the Historic Resource Board, and I attended the meeting on March 2024, and there are about four things to report on. First one is the log cabin open house, which was, which will be hosted by the Lions Club. The event date is April 20th, 2024. The time starting is 11:00 a.m. It's a pancake breakfast, even though it's at 11:00. And I just wanted to clarify, because that was a question at the meeting. The location is Lake Park in Huntington Beach, and its Boy Scout Troop One will be holding a fundraiser from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. The fundraiser will go towards putting a new roof on the log cabin, so I hope that they will be successful in having a lot of participation. The next item is the Tree Society reported that they will be planting 50 trees. Next one is Friends of Edison Park is having a cleanup on April 7th, and Huntington Beach Celebration is, I believe they said June 5th. And the next regularly scheduled meeting for the HRB board is Wednesday, April 17th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. in room B7, lower level of City Hall, 2000 Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pellman. Commissioner Kennedy?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Woods?
No further comments, thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have a, just a short one. I am the liaison to the design review board, and at the last meeting, which was about a month ago, we reviewed the design color materials of a proposed wall and water filters at, at the city's well, which is right next to the Oakview neighborhood. And we pretty much went with a recommended action, which was go a little bit higher on the wall to protect the, so folks from outside couldn't see what, the wells that were inside the facility, which is city property. And we went with a, a black color on the fencing. But other than that, nothing major, nothing crazy, so just wanted to report that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Alcosta Galvez?
No comments.
I've got nothing. And so with that, I believe we're going to go ahead and adjourn the March 26th meeting, and I'll see everybody. The next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, April 9th. We'll see you then. Oh, hang on a minute.
We're anticipating a meeting, Mr. Ramos?
I don't believe we have, we have any items at this time for the next meeting.
Okay, well, we'll wait and see on that one, but thank you. Tonight's meeting is adjourned.